Presentations in the county. Tonight, we have a pretty exciting venue. We've got the county commissioners folks and we got the Hamilton County Sheriff and the Hamilton County Recorder candidates tonight. I will be asking a few questions. If you have a burning question in the audience, just raise your hand. We will take a few questions as we go. So let's start with our Hamilton County Commissioners. Dennis, Danis, Bob and Denise.
(laughing).
Thank you.
Yeah, that was painful, Andrew. It's because Asian first.
So we have a pretty simple format tonight. I've got a microphone here which we will share if we actually need it. Denise, why don't you say something over there? Just say hi, just to hear your voice over there.
What's that? Hi, everybody. Thanks for having us.
Oh, good. We'll use the microphone.
Yeah, I don't think.
We're going to have basically a two-minute opening statement for each candidate and then ask a couple of questions and you've got about a minute to respond. Again, it's a pretty loose, simple format. We pride ourselves here at Finney Town to be a fairly civil organization and operation. But first, let's everybody stand up and we'll do the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on my nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Denise, we'll start with you. Come down this way and here's my.
All right. There's the timer, the infamous timer. Yeah. All right, so two minutes. So I'm Denise Treehouse. Thank you for having us. Very grateful to be here this Sunday evening. I am running for the Hamilton County Commission, as many of you know. From the west side of Cincinnati, I'm one of eight kids. As an adult, moved into Price Hill and raised my daughter Sarah and my son Andrew in Price Hill. Also had a couple businesses on Glenway Avenue. I own the Philip Swim Club and the Front Porch Coffee House. If any of you swam there, I wasn't there then, but anyway.[163.22][163.22](laughing). And then for the last eight years have served as a state representative for the 31st House District. I've worked on issues of education reform, economic development, and worked on the heroin issue as well with the Good Sam Bill that became law not so long ago and provides immunity for those folks that call to save the life of someone that is overdosed. And so, running for the county commission this year, think about sewer rates. We need to get the sewer rates under control. I'm sorry to bring up sewers so soon in the conversation, but it's one of the most important issues as I knock on doors and talk to people. They're very concerned about the rates and the structure of MSD. Also, child protective services is another thing I think we need to invest in as county commissioners in a real way. The children's services levy hasn't seen an increase in 20 years and I think it's time to put it before the voters and let you decide if they deserve a little bit of an increase there. And then the courts and the jails are under the purview of the county commission and I'm hoping to bring some creative solutions to folks who are in the facility and move out of the facility, help them to, you know, get back into the community as productive citizens, whether they've been addicted, whether they've, you know, served their time for a more serious offense. We need to do a better job to keep them from re-entering the jail. But really, I'm running because I would like the Hamilton County Commission to do more with economic development and behave as a partner with all of you and the business community to revitalize communities and move forward together, all 49 jurisdictions. So, thank you again for having us. I'm going to turn it over.
Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Todd Portune. I am currently one of the incumbent county commissioners running for reelection and I am very proud of my service and I stand before you asking for your vote this November 8th so that I can continue to represent you in the same full-time, very hard-fighting manner in which I have during all of my tenure as service as your county commissioner. Many of you know my background, but for those that don't, I was born in Price Hill. I grew up in Corrine Township. I'm a Corrine High School graduate. I went away to college, at Oberlin College, came back to Cincinnati, to the University of Cincinnati College of Law, became a member of a law firm in Cincinnati and a partner there and have practiced law ever since in addition to my public service. I've lived all over this county, east side, west side, township, small city, big city. So I feel like I have a great appreciation of all the various forms of government and have and have represented and served all the forms of government extremely well. You may also know that my father was the first principal of Finney Town High School. So this area, this part of Hamilton County is no stranger whatsoever to me. I currently have received a variety of endorsements, not the least of which are the Cincinnati Enquirer has endorsed me, the Cincinnati Police FOP has endorsed me, and Cincinnati Firefighters Local Union 48 have endorsed me. I have a very broad agenda. What I want to do is take the county forward. I want to clean up the mess at MSD. I want to transport our county into the 21st century in terms of working on a regional multimodal transportation system. We need to get our arms around the county budget and introduce even greater budget controls than those I've already brought to bear as a county commissioner. We need to grow Hamilton County with economic opportunities all over in all the 49 jurisdictions of the county and we need to make sure that we are a healthy county for people to grow up and live and enjoy all the opportunities that we have. I thank you very much and I ask for your vote November 8th.
Good job. Thank you, Andrew.
Hi. My name is Andrew Pappas and I am a candidate for county commissioner. Thank you for having us here tonight. It's wonderful to be here. I'm currently a trustee in Anderson Township on the east side of town. I'm president of the Board of Trustees and I've been serving proudly out there for three years. And why I am running, I want to bring small business perspective to the Commissioner Board. I'm a small business owner first. I have two dry cleaners that I run on the east side of town, one in Anderson Township and one in Hyde Park. And I've been out there for over 20 years just plying my trade and doing the best I can do to keep my businesses open. I have probably 20 employees at each location and I feel that as a small business owner, I really have a very close connection with what the average person is going through in Hamilton County. I have had the fortune, been very fortunate to have, in my business, there's usually a high rate of turnover in the service retail business, but I've kept the same employees for, some of them, 20 years, almost 20 years since the day we opened. And that's rare in retail service business and I feel that that reflects on how I treat my employees and how I treat my customers. And I just think it's time that we had a small business owner on the Commissioner Board that represents the interests of small business because I know how hard it is these days. It seems like it's harder and harder to keep your businesses open and your bottom line is getting squos every day. So I decided to run. The opportunity came available and I'm happily take up the challenge. This is not a personal race against Todd. This is just a different in perspective. I believe in limited government. I believe in fiscal responsibility and I believe in constitutional conservatism. So that's why I'm running and thank you for having me here and it's a pleasure to be here.
Thank you and thank you to the Finney Town Civic Association for this opportunity. I'm Dennis Dietz. I am your Hamilton County Commissioner. I'm born and raised in Finney Town, Ohio. Proud to say that I think I've spent most of my life here. Born on East Gate Drive, not Good Sam, but rather soon East Gate Drive, off a Mockingbird. This is a date that I circled on my calendar because I recognize the needs of communities like Finney Town. I remember how great this community was, how great it is, and I know how great it is now. And I think as a county commissioner, it's my obligation to be of service to communities like Finney Town who may, some may consider losing population and in a way, losing opportunity. But I think that the commissioners and the county needs to recognize that there's communities like Finney Town that shouldn't be forgotten as it relates to our public safety and our development. I'm an attorney by trade. I practiced law for 15 years. I represented governments, police departments, police officers. I'm a litigator. I've taken the position of public service as a county commissioner. Prior to that, I was a township trustee in Corrine Township. And I think I bring a unique perspective in that raising my family in Corrine Township, three young children at home, and I believe I have a vested interest in the future of our community. I do understand that I think we've gotten lost in government and we've lost our way in some sense in the perspective that we should be directing ourselves to have our, give a better life to our kids. And that's why I'm doing this because I believe it's our obligation as government to be leaders that are directed, big picture, to hand off a better life to our children. Thank you.
One of the things that the Finney Town Civic Association has grappled with and the Finney Town schools over the last 10 or 15 years has been the rising number of kids in poverty. And Hamilton County is not immune to that. And we've noticed that with so many kids in poverty in Hamilton County right now and some of the issues with Hamilton County jobs and family services, their budget has been cut. How do you plan as commissioners to improve the workability of Hamilton County jobs and family services to address a lot of this poverty issues we have here? Dennis, we'll just go back down the other way.
One minute. Well, it is an issue that every community is dealing with and poverty, child poverty, obviously, family poverty is a consideration the commissioners are obligated to tackle. We have a significant levy funding that the voters have said, county commission, do your job, provide quality services to our children. We've got significant issues that have caused stress and burden on our jobs and family services. Those would be the heroin epidemic, which is placing a massive drain on our foster care system, as well as different funding changes. And those two changes need to be considered over the next two years and the trending of the cost that it's going to require to take care of our children. It's my obligation as a county commissioner to keep an eye on those increased costs and I think in two years, we're going to have to ask for a significant funding increase way beyond the increase that was asked for or the increase that may have been recommended by the county. So that's my commitment to this community. Thank you.
Well, I'll echo a lot of what Dennis said. Our perspectives are similar, but what I will say is that it's family poverty and I think that one of the best ways to overcome that is that opening of businesses, I mean, to make a business-friendly environment that businesses flourish. I really think that that's maybe a perspective that may not be represented and thought of. Too many times, we think top-down that the help should come from above and to a certain extent, it should, but I think that we create the environment and the incentives for people to go out on their own and start these operations and lift themselves out of poverty. I will agree that heroin has, the heroin crisis has really contributed to this and put excess stress on job and family services and the caseworkers are doing an increased load with the same number of people and it's just really causing them a lot of stress and it's reflected in some of the attitudes or some of the turnover that they've had there. So it will need to be addressed here shortly through increased funding. I agree with that.
The issue of children in poverty certainly is one where I agree in part with what my opponent has raised and that is it's a family issue. I don't know a child who's in poverty that doesn't live in a family setting where you have poverty. So we've got to focus on the issue of greater job creation, on the question of creating an environment that's more conducive to create jobs, to expand existing jobs, to have businesses relocate in Hamilton County. And we've got to also, with respect to job and family services, acknowledge that the cuts that they suffered largely because of the recession has put them at a point where the only thing that you can do with less is less. And so, we need to reinforce that division of the county with greater resources, whether it's by revisiting the levy, when we're going to look at that in three years and adding more resources or not. But we've got to focus on making sure we've got a transportation system that will allow businesses to locate, invest in connections to sites where businesses will want to locate and make sure that we're focused on the issues that do make business more conducive to want to locate here to rise families out of poverty.
Thank you. And I do want to echo some of the comments of my colleagues here. Childhood poverty is family poverty. Children are born into poverty. And so, my answer to the question is, we need to create jobs. And the county has an opportunity to partner with businesses to help them create those jobs and grow the pie. Because in the end, if you want to have more resources for the work of the county commission, if you were to grow the pie, you would have ample resources to get that job done. And so, my view of the county is one as a partner, one as a collaborator with the public, public and public-private partnerships that we've seen created in some of the communities in the county. And beyond that, child protective services, the levy's on the ballot. I do not think we should wait two years to decide to increase that levy. Voters generally approve of this levy by 68% of the vote. I feel as though the county commissioners should have put that increase in front of you and let you decide whether or not you want to increase that levy for inflation. I think it's something that's a priority for the community and I would have done that sooner than later. Thank you.
I heard all four candidates say something about improving the situation for businesses to locate here and to thrive here in Hamilton County. The Ohio Department of Transportation is just completing $110 million of I-75 improvement at Hopple Street. We've got five lanes north, five lanes south, and all of a sudden, you go south and all of a sudden, you run into two lanes on the bridge that really should have been replaced 25 years ago. That's a huge economic generator for this region. I know you folks are in the county, but what can you do to help expedite maybe that bridge being replaced or repertoned?
So we're talking about the Brent Spence Bridge. And as a state rep, I do want to say that we are poised to move forward with the Brent Spence. Kentucky, though, is holding it up. I mean, I think you probably all know that. But as a state rep, I was supportive of legislation to make sure that we are ready to go when Kentucky, if Kentucky, changes their minds about how they would like to move forward with that. So it's not, you know, we just don't need to just wring our hands and say, you know, we need to get ready and we need to be ready as a state of Ohio and that's what we've done. The other thing, though, that when you talk about infrastructure, it's not, the Brent Spence, in my view, is a federal highway, I mean, it is, it's a federal highway project. We need partners, multi-jurisdictional partners that will help with the funding of that. But think about the Western Hills Viaduct, too. There are a lot of bridges that are in need of repair. That one is lousy. I don't know how many of you drive it, but it's terrible. And it's a main connector from the west side into the jobs and the universities up in Clifton and beyond. And so, I think the Brent Spence is very important. Kentucky's got us a little bit on hold right now, but there are other infrastructure projects that we need to be paying attention to, both as a county and a city, and working together to resolve those funding issues.
Yeah, I think we have to be, pick up on where Denise left off. We have to be real about the issue and the connection of transportation with jobs. As important as the Brent Spence Bridge project is, what's probably of greater importance to Hamilton County and connectivity and jobs is eliminating all the gaps in our infrastructure that we have in our freight transportation infrastructure system, providing access to development sites. We had 64 businesses that came and left in 2015 because there was not access to adequate job development sites. We've got to eliminate those kinds of gaps. And then, in terms of our people-moving system, we do not have a sufficient multimodal integrated transportation system that gets people to where the jobs are. Chamber of Commerce, Agenda 360, Skyward and the Urban Land Institute all reported last year that we rank last compared to our regional peers in terms of the adequacy of a regional transportation system that is conducive to grow jobs in Hamilton County. Brent Spence Bridge shouldn't be a local issue at all. It's really a federal problem where the federal government need to invest and any talk of tolls was let, should have been last, not first. But the real issue is a local transportation system and closing the gaps in our freight and our people-moving system together.
Well, the question was about the Brent Spence Bridge and I think we've decided that it's more of a federal issue. I will say that it is important to Hamilton County, of course, because you're exactly right. You've got five lanes coming down to two and it's a mess. It's something that really should have been addressed years and years ago and started planning for this. The cost is astronomical. But I think that the perspective is that Hamilton County, the commissioners need to make sure that they push as hard as they can to get everyone to the table to expedite that process because it benefits us greatly. I drive quite a bit to Michigan and I see all the trucks. This is truly one of the most important north-south corridors in the nation. And the fact that it's now coming to a two-lane bridge that is in dire need of repair is really something the federal government should address. The other thing is, I will say, when I hear multimodal, I get a little apprehensive because that to me means something more than buses, maybe trains, and I'm not a fan of that. I think buses are the most efficient way to get people around because my employees take them every day and I'd like to see an increase in efficiency and recognize that our buses are in dire need of being fixed up. They're way in need of overhaul and they're beyond, I hear reports every day of the buses, the status they're in and it's something that needs to be addressed.
I do agree that there's a federal jurisdictional component with the Brent Spence Bridge, but I will tell you, when the bridge continues to deteriorate and we lose the ability for commerce and business in our county, I take that as a responsibility. So it's up to our local leadership, even though it's a federal project and/or an interstate project, to step up to the plate and drive answers on that project. Because at the end of the day, it's the obligation of local government to deliver for its businesses, for its residents, and that's what I do every day as a county leader. And, you know, there's no passing the buck on that issue in no way, shape or form. And I think it's incumbent upon our Transportation Improvement District as well as our local, our local federal congress, senators, to step up the plate and drive that project to its fruition because we can't wait.
Denise?
I understand you, you say that the bridge doesn't affect local jobs, but it does. I work at University of Cincinnati and people complain all the time about the people in Kentucky trying to get over, the people going down there. A bridge is a big divider between the area. I know you are saying you don't have any jurisdiction over this at all, but, you know, maybe you could lobby somebody who does. I mean, I don't know who to go to, but it's ridiculous. You go other areas of the country and they've got bridges to nowhere and, you know, little places that've got, you know, you go to Florida, you go to the coast and everything else, they've got bridges everywhere. Why can't we have a bridge, a major north-south bridge that makes sense? And also, something that you guys may be able to do something about is with all this construction with the sewers and the gas line that came through and everything else, why can't the, who has, the, who is over the people who do these repairs? They dig a hole, they put a patch on there, it's bumpy, it deteriorates the roads after that, it's really shoddy work. They put in sewers and they aren't even with the road. It's a big pet peeve of mine. I, my back hurts and when you hit a bump, it hurts my back. And you tear them up, you make a mess, you clean up your mess. You know, you make it smooth again. Where is the oversight of all this?
Well, that's a pretty good question.[1410.13][1410.13](laughing). You guys want to take a stab at it? All right. Just go back down.
Well, I agree with you. I think I was attempting to say that it is our responsibility as far as the Brent Spence because these are businesses that are served by that bridge. As it relates to the bumps, you know, there's a number of people that do work, road work. One of them may be the sewer district, which ultimately is being operated by the city. The county owns it. There's also, you know, pipelines that are not necessarily the one that's coming down the pike as it relates to the eastern side of the county, but other pipelines. Those may be individual contractors, but I would encourage you to speak to your local representation here at the township. Sorry, Gwen.
Okay.
But that's the first.
They're county roads.
Well, if it is a county road, the county engineer needs to be responsible for that ultimately because those are your tax dollars going into those repairs and there's no reason they should be subpar. But I'd be happy to.
I mean, it's everywhere.
I agree with you. I agree with you and honestly, you know.
Corrine Avenue, if you go down Corrine Avenue, why can't the sewer lids be on the same level as the road? Why is, why are they like that big of a hole?
I understand and honestly.
I mean, who's responsible? Who is the oversight?
The county commissioner and the county engineer are responsible for those reds and I encourage you to engage.
And who's about them? I mean, who's, is that you guys?
You.
Ted Lefebvre, I assume, Ted Hubbard.
It's you, in November.
Next.
I don't think anyone up here said that the bridge wasn't important to the residents here. It is. It's a great, you know, point. It is, of course it is. It's the biggest thing that holds you back from going, this region back when you're stuck in traffic. Nobody wants to be stuck in traffic and it's not safe. How many times have we seen accidents on the bridge? It's truly not safe. It's hazardous. You get 18-wheelers coming down at high rates of speed and they have to brake all of a sudden. It's a dangerous situation. Problem is, it's a federal project and we need to put pressure on our federal representation to get this done, both on Ohio and Kentucky's side. Now, as far as the street repairs, I will tell you that, you know, I know that when, in my township per se, when there's work done and I see it done in a shoddy fashion, as you mentioned, nothing worse than a pet peeve of seeing, I think you mentioned Corrine, that the sewer lids are up, I'm not sure, but I don't understand that. Now, sometimes.
Thoughts you have going on?
I'll tell you what, I find the contractor and I get it fixed.
Yeah, as certainly as the Chair of the County's Transportation Improvement District and our representative to OKI and an officer of OKI, I didn't mean to imply the Brent Spence Bridge is not important, but in my answer to the question, what I understood it to be was the relationship of Brent Spence to jobs and transportation. And frankly, there's a lot more to transportation than the Brent Spence Bridge and having a broader transportation system, freight and people addressing gaps all over Hamilton County is going to do more for jobs completely for Hamilton County than just the Brent Spence Bridge. Bridge, though, is critically important. I have, as the county's representative, as an officer of OKI, been going to Washington since 2011 on Brent Spence Bridge and saying, look, there's got to be federal money in this project. You can't say that it's all tolls, local tolls, local tolls. That put an inordinate burden on local ratepayers and taxpayers when the federal government needs to invest in the Brent Spence Bridge. You're right, we should have a bridge like other places do. 7% of the nation's gross domestic product moves over that bridge annually. It's critically important, but it should not be a locally funded project. We needed Washington to invest in it before we then went and asked locals to bear whatever their proportion of share it should be. And we've been fighting with Washington for the federal government to invest in the bridge in appropriate and a fair manner for a number of years, going back at a minimum to 2011.
And I, of course, agree that Brent Spence is a critical issue for businesses and residents. If you ask business owners, one of their primary reasons for being in this region is access to transportation, its logistics, and it's also an educated workforce, by the way. And so, it's critical. I think the point I was making is the state of Ohio had, has a responsibility to help with this. It's multi-jurisdictional, the feds, the state, the county, the city, and in a bipartisan way, the entire delegation got together and made sure that we had legislation passed already so that we are ready to go when Kentucky decides to move there. We can't do it without Kentucky. We can't. And so, we need for them to get on board. And as far as the local roads go, you know, they're, oftentimes, they're contracted out to different companies and I do think there, you know, are degrees of a well-done project and a not-so-well-done project. And so, you know, if you were to call, I would hope that if you called the county commission, they're able to identify the contractor in charge of that particular project and bring your concerns to their attention.
Well, I know going down Wynton Road, to me, just really annoys me when you have a brand-new road and you've got weeds coming on the sidewalk, you've got dust and stuff, gravel from that in-demand site down there at Wynton Road and in SD, Dutch Colony, and it's goofy how you build a new road and all of a sudden, weeds are coming out of the sidewalk. The big elephant in the room, though, I think right now for Hamilton County is the MSD, the Metropolitan Sewer District situation. I think next year is the next year where the decision's going to have to be made to either separate, keep the MSD separate from the city county.
April 18.
So, and I think maybe we give each one of you two minutes on this particular answer. And of course, the rates are going up, just out of the blue on, I know, there's a company called Core Redevelopment that is just renting. called Core Redevelopment that has just renovated the old school for performing arts down in Over the Rhine. They're now going to maybe tackle the Crosby Project in Camp Washington. They told me that they have never worked in the worst county, city, in terms of permits, regulations, hassles, cost. They almost walked away from the Crosby Project. This is a massive, giant project. And the other issue was the sewer district, how they're going to deal with the sewer in this big giant building. So, what do you see as a solution for the next couple of years on the MSD issue?
Okay, so, two minutes. So, there are two issues in my mind here, affordability and then the structure of MSD. So, affordability is a big deal. Your rates have tripled in the last 10 years, as you probably all know. And so, there was an affordability task force set up by the commission. They offered recommendations in May. The commission didn't do anything with the recommendations, remember, it was their task force. And so, when pressured, they said they would do something by Labor Day. They did not do anything by Labor Day. When pressured, again, they did take up one of the recommendations, which is monthly billing, which I do think is a good idea because it helps you budget, helps especially a business owner, budget. And so, I applaud that. However, the rest of the recommendations are now starting to be studied. Remember that the recommendations came out in May. I do not think we can afford that kind of delay on one of the biggest issues in Hamilton County. The structure is a different question. The county owns, the city runs. It's been a very complicated, and it's just not a good relationship, as you all know, and you've read about it in the paper. There's a lot of blaming going on between the two. My approach to that would be one of collaboration. I'm a state rep. I've worked well with others in a bipartisan way to get things done. I'm also a business owner, and I'm a fairly practical person. And so, I am interested in getting the city and the county to sit down at the same table and hammer out a solution. And if that solution looks like an independent board that would have appointees from both the city and the county, kind of take the politics out of it, other counties in the state are doing this, and they are under a consent decree, maybe that's one thing to look at. We need some creative solutions. A contract's up in 2018. It is time to start looking at it now, you know, before we get to 2018 and we haven't figured this stuff out. But, I really believe strongly that collaboration, because there are shared assets here, there should be collaboration between the city and the county.
I think one of the most important things is to clean up the mess at MSD. I did bring literature here with me tonight, and in the five areas that I think we need to continue to focus as high priorities, that's number one in my book. It's number one issue we hear about. It is not an issue, however, I will tell you, that we're only now awakening to and trying to do something about. As president of Board of County Commissioners in 2007, I engaged since then, Mayor Mark Mallory, about trying to negotiate an early termination of this 50-year agreement because it was not working. But, it takes two to tango, and the city was unwilling to negotiate and unwilling to do anything about it. Four years later, under a different leadership, the same thing, tried to engage the city, and the city was not willing to sit down and negotiate. Only within the past year or so has the city been willing to come to the table, and that's largely in this climate of the wheels falling off at MSD and all these audits going on, and the FBI audit, and all these other things at the city. So, for a long time, we've wanted to put an end to this agreement, try to be proactive about it, and create a scenario where you have true accountability, where you don't have MSD pointing fingers at the city or the county playing us against each other. And, you can still use it, Andrew. You know, dang, I lost my train of thought. An entity that's accountable to multiple matters becomes accountable to none. And frankly, that's where we are with MSD. We've got to end this scenario. Dennis and I are involved right now in weekly negotiations with the city where we're under a federal gag order. We can't talk about that, so, what we're doing, unfortunately. Very quickly on rates, I'm almost out of time. But, I've been standing up to EPA and the Department of Justice at the US government dating back to 2007 on the issue of rates. We've gotten some partial concessions, but it led to Congress, me working in a bipartisan manner with members of Congress, a bill has been introduced that can save us up to $1 billion on our costs that will greatly reduce rates. The Senate adopted its portion of that two weeks ago. The House is going to take it up after the election recess. And it's taken a long time. You can't just stand up to EPA and say, "Hey, stop doing what you're doing," and they say, "Oh, sure, Todd Portun, thank you. We're going to do that." But, I've been at it, we've been at it as a county board, we're unanimous on it. We're about to see real relief in there, which will save us up to $1 billion in costs.
Sorry.
All right.
He stole my line.
It's all right, Andrew.
No one affects us affected by MSD more than I. My business, if you've heard me before, I don't mean to repeat myself, we use a lot of water in my business. We clean a lot of clothes. And I've seen my rates go from one location, one location alone, from $500 to $700 a quarter now to over $2,000 a quarter. That's a big jump. And it's hard to run your business when these rates are forecast to still go up and up and up. I was on the rate review task force. Simple fact of the matter is, we have a lot of money to spend that's mandated by the EPA. Who's going to pay for it? We all are. We all are. Simple fact, it is. And although this problem may not have just come up, it's been coming up for quite a while, and I appreciate the work that's been done, but sadly, we're all paying for it. It's hard to remain economically competitive when a business is looking at the cost of doing business in Hamilton County and comparing it to the other surrounding counties. And if they use, and I'm not even a large user of water, I'm really not. Some of these manufacturing, light manufacturing firms use a lot of water in their manufacturing process, and we're telling them, "Don't locate in Hamilton County." I mean, by default, we are, because the cost of doing business here is too high for something as simple as water. And you raised in your question, you raised permitting, and you talked about core resources and the hassles that go through. No one knows that more than a business owner. I've said, look, I've said numerous times, when I did my one plant, and then I expanded, and I did another plant, I had to go downtown and get a permit and do the inspections and deal with the different government entities. I said, "Why am I doing this? Am I not, are we not wanted here?" We need to be open in attracting businesses because with those businesses come jobs, and with those jobs come families, and that's what makes the county grow. So, I think that that perspective that I bring to the table is unique in the fact that I've lived this, I deal with this every day, fighting, bumping my head against the wall and trying to figure out ways, maybe looking at the same problem in a different way that hasn't been looked at before and bringing different solutions to the same Since I've been on the county commission, I can tell you that nothing makes me more angry than thinking about our sewer district. And the reason is that it's being operated by the city of Cincinnati, and this isn't a blame game, but the fact of the matter is that there is zero accountability to the repairs. And that is unacceptable in any form of government. Government should be by the people. What happened at the sewer district over the last 10 years is special interests, politics, and patronage were trumping your pocketbook. And because of that, we've got an operator that's basically gone rogue. And Commissioner Portun and I have been in court since I've been on the commission, at my urging and his urging, to drive a solution because we are obliged to find one. This county cannot survive with these rates increasing at this rate. And frankly, whoever is ultimately running the system, and I hope it's the county, needs to be accountable to the voters and the ratepayers at the end of the day to deliver an efficient system, to do all the EPA mandated work efficiently, to drive down costs, to be at the table with the EPA to make sure that this is an affordable community. We have no other choice. And on my watch, that's what's going to happen. In local government, the buck stops right here. My obligation to your families, to your business, is unequivocal, and I will tell you that on my watch, we will find a solution to MSD. As far as the rates are concerned, there's been a lot of talk about the rate affordability task force. There's some recommendations that were pretty easy ones to pick off. There were others that will, and I'm saying this with complete certainty, will increase rates downstream. And I'm not going to be involved in a government that passes the buck to our kids. That's what we've seen time and time again in bad government. That's why we're in the situation we're in. From a federal standpoint, I'm not going to stand for it.
Well, one good thing that MSD's done in terms of Dennis is it's shifted the sickening hatred, bad feelings from our stadium deal to MSD. So, hopefully, we can get this worked out because it definitely is affecting families and businesses here in county. We've got to close here, so just take a minute and just do a summation about why you're running and just do your final pitch.
Thank you again to Finney Town, my hometown, for having me tonight. I appreciate the opportunity. I believe in public service. I think that for a long time, we've lost our way as it relates to public servants. People are in politics because they want a career. I am not. I am here to deliver a better Hamilton County for our community, for our next generation. And I know that who you decide is your county commissioner of the four people here. They will make some critical decisions, supercritical decisions, as it relates to the future of your life and your kids and your grandkids. So, I hope that you would support me because my direction and my priority is to you and only you. Thank you.
Well, thank you again for having us. This has actually been a very cordial evening, so thank you. Why am I running? Some of them haven't been, so that's what I'm saying. Why am I running? Listen, I think I bring a unique perspective. I am not a, what I would call, a career politician by any way, shape, or form. I am coming to government service reluctantly because I got tired of yelling at the TV, and I got tired of yelling at the newspaper. Nobody listens to that. And I said, "By God, if I'm not going to stand up and fix these problems, then no one is." So, I am what you would call a reluctant public servant. I think I bring a unique perspective to, an outside perspective to maybe the same problems and looking at them in a different way and thinking outside the box, and how do we solve some of these problems in ways that may not have been thought of before? It's what I've done in Anderson Township. I'd like to bring the same perspective to Hamilton County because, you know what, no matter what goes on at the top of the ticket, and everyone's focused on the presidential race, this race right here is going to hit your pocketbooks more than any other race. So, I think it's one of the most important local races you have to focus on.
I too want to thank everyone for being here and to the Finney Town Civic Association for sponsoring this forum so that you could all hear from us. I have been your county commissioner, and I want to ask humbly for your vote so that I can continue serving you in the manner in which I have. I'm battle-tested, and I've been a fighter. And you don't need a new face to come up with fresh ideas. I was elected with a mandate to get county finances under control with things like the stadium project. I've done that. It was my idea that allowed us to fund not just one, but two convention center expansions and bring more money for other investment in tourism-related business throughout the county. It was my initiative that brought to us an expansion of the board authority in the land bank in Hamilton County that's helping to clean up the blighted and vacant and abandoned property in the county. And I've brought forward an issue called Cradle Cincinnati, a new initiative that is solving our infant mortality problem in Hamilton County and saving babies' lives. We have the highest rate of babies dying before their first birthday in Hamilton County. I want to continue that service, if you will continue to have me, to allow me to continue to fight for you and to bring up new creative ideas solving our toughest problems. I'm Todd Portun, and I thank you, and I ask for your vote November 8th.
And I too want to thank you for being here this evening on a Sunday night and for Joe and the civic organization for having us. So, I am running, I have enjoyed my service as a state representative. I too view this as public service and have been pretty effective in a bipartisan way of getting things done and bringing things or resources down to Hamilton County as a state rep. I hope to continue that service on the Hamilton County Commission. I view the county and government as a partner, at least a potential partner. I think you want roads and bridges. I think you want someone to pick up the phone when you dial 911. I think when you go to the restaurant, you want to make sure there's clean and healthy food at that restaurant. You need government to do what we do so that you can do what you do. And that's as a resident, as a business owner. And so, I take the job very seriously. I'm a full-time state rep. I would be a full-time county commissioner if given the opportunity by the voters of Hamilton County. And so, I will approach the job as one of service, but also as partnership, and make sure that everyone feels like they're part of moving the county forward together. Thank you.[1794.51]